Madam Chair, we are all set to go. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Here.
Mr. Valencia.
Here.
Ms. Weewell.
Here.
Ms. Better Barza.
Here.
Mr. Langham.
Here, yeah.
Ms. Logue.
Here.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will move and start with the hearing scheduled for 1:00 p.m. And with that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this conference?
Madam Chair, this is Patrick, Attorney Patrick Sweeney, appearing for 27 Mystic Street, Ward Two. My office is Marcy Sweeney, 261 Main Street, Charles Town.
I'm sorry, you're seeking a deferral?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge, can you read into the record first?
Certainly, Madam Chair. That will be for case BOA 154-8361, with the address of 27 Mystic Street. Go ahead, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you. My name is Attorney Patrick Sweeney. I represent the Malandia at 27 Mystic Street. We're requesting a brief deferral. Yesterday, my client received an updated refusal letter, and that was transmitted to me this morning. So we'd like an opportunity to go over some of the additions to that letter. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Javier?
Madam Chair, let's say April 9th, just in case there's any updates to plans or any additional information needed for that.
Does that work, Mr. Sweeney?
We have provided updated plans.
Mr. Sweeney, does April 9th work?
Can we have an earlier date, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, March 26th? If that works, I just, it needs to be re-advertized. It would be cutting it close around that time.
Fine, I understand. The 9th will work then.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to April the 9th.
You have a second.
Sure.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
There any further requests for withdrawal? From this time, from this time frame?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. We will start off with case BOA 146-0666, with the address of 61 Brook Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board please?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Edward DeBeau. A pre-existing three-unit dwelling located in the lower Eagle Hill section of East Boston. If we can jump down, probably to slide five, four, yeah, start there. That's probably good place to start. Yeah, so we have existing conditions. It's a lot that's 25 feet wide, about 75 feet deep. It's dimensionally non-conforming currently under the 302,000 district. If we jump to the next slide, please. Showing just that we're not identified in the flood zone, although I will have a chance to talk briefly about the coastal flood resilience in the overlay district as I know. The BPDAs recommendation, I've made some comments about that. Next slide, please. Into the building here, it's the existing, as I said, standard triple decker. Our proposal would change the occupancy from three units to four units. The proposal would also include the addition of a private roof deck on the roof. Our use of the lower level, although it looks relatively short from this angle, we see our elevations in profile view. There is a full walkout condition to the back of the property, so there is sufficient area to allow for light and windows, full-size windows in the lower-level unit. If we could jump to the next slide, please. Some different street views here, looking down Brook Street towards the Breement Street Park, relatively close to the airport T station, which is located about two blocks from the site, so another view of the building here. Could probably jump to the site plan. So showing our existing conditions, we don't change anything with respect to the building footprint itself. So the non-conformities that currently exist under Article 53 are not exacerbated, except when it comes to the items that Article 53 requires for usable open space. We have a requirement currently under our zoning that 300 square feet of open space be provided for each unit. As I've mentioned in previous presentations since January 18th, the recommendations for planning East Boston actually eliminate usable open space requirements, the maximum floor-to-air ratio, and will allow for, in this particular zoning district, multifamily use. So while a number of the violations that we do currently have on Article 53 are triggered because of the current zoning that's in place, many of these do get eliminated eventually once the planning of East Boston recommendations have been fully adopted by the zoning commission. With respect to the open space, one of the things that planning of East Boston recommendations do change with new zoning is a permeable area and lot coverage. This existing condition will comply with both of those requirements under new zoning for the EBR 4 district, specifically that the building not occupy more than 60% of the area of a lot, and that there be at least 30% permeability, both of which we're able to achieve and as are reflected in the recommendation of the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Next slide, please. So we do have the existing conditions of the basement. There's open area, utility, storage, et cetera. If we go to the next slide. We can see the proposed modifications that create a one-bedroom, which is towards the rear. We have about 736 square feet total. We have two means of egress, as well as a dedicated area for utility that is accessible to the entire building. The introduction of sprinkler tanks for the building as well, as you can see in the, towards the front portion of the building. There's no other real change to the building itself. If we jump to, I believe it's slide 18 for the roof deck, you can see the scope of the roof deck as well. So we do propose a private roof deck that is accessed by hatch. We're not proposing to introduce a headhouse. As you can see, the alignment of this is sufficiently set back from the front of the building where it's barely visible. And because this building is set closest to the left property line, we've aligned our roof deck with that as well. With respect to the relief, the additional relief that would be relevant in this case, the current condition of three residential units would be a pre-existing use that predates the Boston Zoning Enabling Act, and therefore, there is no parking required, because certainly this was an allowable use, an existing use prior to 1993 when Article 53 was introduced. The zoning code does state that for each additional unit you're proposing, you're required to add a parking, the required parking space for the additional units proposed, not for the existing units. And in this case, as we often see when we're dealing with one parking space, the public works policy with respect to curb cuts, even if one were capable of being added to this site, is to not allow for curb cuts where one parking space is being proposed. So in this instance, we're requesting relief from that parking requirement. As I indicated, the proximity of public transit is relatively close, less than two blocks to our south, heading towards the Breement Street Park. The one other last item I would like to address, certainly referenced in the BPDAs recommendation, which recommended, even though this wouldn't align with planning of East Boston recommendations for use, density and size, was that this should not be permitted because it also lies with the coastal flood resilience of the overlay district. I would point out to the board, and certainly I've made my comments known regarding the changes that are being proposed specifically respecting East Boston, where we do have a good deal of coastal flood resilience areas. This site is not located in a flood zone, not even in any of the elevated flood zones that are usually identified for those types of regulations. More importantly, 25A is applicable currently to projects that come under either small or large project review, of which this project does not trigger. I do understand that there is an amendment to the Article 53 that indicates that coastal flood resilience will apply, and that assumes the zoning commission adopts that recommendation. But this application was submitted long before that recommendation was finalized, and we feel that the current state of 25A would exempt this project from any coastal flood resilience guidelines. So have any inserted questions to the board with respect to this proposal?
Thank you, Attorney. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like for Jeff Hampton to speak on this, because I do see that the project is on a coastal flood resilient overlay district, and the BPDAs has made recommendations in regards to basement that there not be a habitable bedroom because of its prone to flooding, potential flooding risk. Jeff, can you make a comment regarding this project, as what the applicant just mentioned, not really applying those guidelines to this property, even though on your, on your coastal flood resilient design guideline, it kind of just notes all of East Boston as being adverse to flooding?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Barza. Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. This is a recommendation that we make throughout the city. Even though we do know that seafrog would not be applicable to this project, we have made a similar recommendation to other neighborhoods in the city, specifically South Boston, where somebody has increased the number of dwelling units to include a basement unit. Knowing that the seafrog regs don't apply, it is still our policy and belief to put this on the record that this is a concern for us to have units in the basement, whether it be a walkout or a fully, you know, a fully defined basement. The BPDAs likes to put it on the record that just basement units within the seafrog in general is just a concern for us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair. It just occurred to me, and this is to Attorney Lenz. If this basement unit were to have flooding or water, how would that be remedied? Or is that anticipated in the plans?
I don't know if we have somebody from Joy Street here, but I can, I can speak to, and again, this has been a concern throughout the conversation of planning of East Boston recommendations, and sort of scooping up a lot of these smaller buildings that are, what I would say, well outside the flood zone, you know, to sort of bring those into seafrog jurisdiction. I'm not sure if we have either Tria or Sharon on the call, but they could address any of those concerns. And I'm sure that we could certainly address some design elements that would at least try to mitigate some of those issues. But we don't see this location as being at greater risk simply because it's, only because it's in the seafrog. As I said, it's well outside the flood zone.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melvia Gomez with the Office of Neighborhood Service. ONS hosted an address meeting for this project on May 2nd, 2023. The applicant also met with the Eagle Hill Civic Association and the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in May of 2023. The Maverick Central Neighborhood Association voted to support the project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Hassan Park in Councilor Colletta's office. The council would likely want to support this project. Thank you.
No additional, no raised hands. Thank you. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Much, oh, great, thanks.
Next case has been deferred, and maybe some questions for this case, which is case BOA 155-2194, with the address of 457 to 469 A West Broadway. Is there someone, is the applicant and/or representative present who explained this?
Madam Chair, this is Javier. I'm not sure if the applicant's here, but we do have a note that says they're requesting withdrawal. The board can just make a quick motion and vote on that.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to withdraw the case for 457 to 469 A West Broadway?
Javier, are we approving the withdrawal or making a motion, whatever?
Yes, approve the withdrawal.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
That, we will move on to case BOA 154-0339, with the address of 675 East Fourth Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please?
Present. John McGann, present.
Matthew Johnson, present.
Whoever is going to speak, if you give your address and then proceed.
John McGann Gavin Foundation, 675 East Fourth Street, South Boston, Mass.
Please proceed.
Madam Chair, we're looking for a variance to put in a handicap ramp to our residential recovery home located at 675 East Fourth Street. The property is enclosed by a brick fence or wall around it. We feel it'll have, will not impede or obstruct any of our neighbors. We have flyer in the neighborhood and submitted letters of support.
Any questions from the board? Hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Pulaski within Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The 675 East Fourth Street proponents distributed flyers to abutting properties notifying neighbors of the proposal to install an ADA ramp at their address. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Torridana from Council of Flynn's office. Please note that Council of Flynn and Councilor Murphy submitted a support letter on this matter to the board as the installation on an ADA complaint ramp will allow for accessibility for persons with disabilities who require assistance and treatment programs for substance use disorders. This ramp will allow the Gavin House to serve all who need their assistance in alliance with the mission of the City of Boston Disability Commission. Council of Flynn respectfully asks that the board provide every consideration for its approval. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy, would you like to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Laura, from Council of Flynn's office. Just wanted to come on personally. I know I submitted a letter along with Council of Flynn and my own. Thank you to John McGann and the Gavin Foundation, and the Gavin House is a wonderful neighbor. It's been there for decades now, and just want to make sure that we get this ramp passed through, because everyone needs recovery services, and this will make it accessible to all. So looking forward to having this pass and have the Gavin House be, you know, a place where those with disabilities, with mobility issues can access the services that are much needed. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Yes. Go ahead, Alan.
No, you can go ahead. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
All right, I make a motion to approve this project.
May I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 155-3384, with the address of 8 to 10 Mercer Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair members, my name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Mark Little. Madam Chair members, this is an application for a six-unit building, some procedural history. Most important, I would point out that this project has already been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeal. It has been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeal twice, as a matter of fact. By way of explanation, this originally came to the board as an ALT application for an addition to an existing two-family structure to convert into a six-unit building. It was approved by this board on October 27th of 2020. As I mentioned, this first was applied for, and construction began under an ALT application. During construction, building walls collapsed during construction. Once that occurred, essentially, there was no wall left from the initial or the original structure. ERT required that my client converted from an ALT or alteration permit to an ERT or erect permit. This came back to the Board of Appeal on March 14th, 2023. It was approved again as an ERT and for two additional violations. One owing to the fact that the number of off-street parking spaces was reduced at the time from six to five. And at that time, the number of units was also reduced to five, so it's gone from a six-unit project to a five-unit project. There was also a violation cited at that time for an insufficient rear yard setback. The building's approved height was at 42 and a half feet. Building was resumed process of construction. A field inspector some months ago took a laser measure and determined that the top of the, of the headhouse or the partial top story of the building was actually several inches above the 42 and a half feet that was approved. This was because the foundation height changed during construction from what was originally approved. My client was faced with either seeking a variance for an additional height violation or correcting the violation. My client corrected the violation. He literally just took the offending several inches of the, off of the top of the headhouse. He then submitted as constructed plans to ISD to verify that condition. At that time, the Plans Examiner cited the project for previously unsighted violations that had been missed, certainly during the, in the refusal letter that precipitated the March 14th, 2023 ZBA approval. So on the refusal letter that issued, it will be noted that there are, what the Plans Examiner is referring to as new variances, but these are for conditions that already existed. Number one, there was a citation for, I referred earlier to the fact that South Boston has a maximum building height violation under the dimensional table, but then because of the 2017 amendment to the code, Article 68, the existing height of any building existing at the time of the amendment becomes the new zoning height of that parcel. When this was converted from an ALT to an ERT, the Plans Examiner should at that time have cited this additional violation, but he did not, in fact, notice it until this refusal letter issued on August 21st, 2023. So again, that is no change. It's simply a condition that, a violation that previously had not been cited was cited owing to the fact that the Plans Examiner recognized the violation. He also cited a lack of a five-foot buffer area in the rear where the parking spaces are located. Nothing has changed with respect to the location of the parking spaces, but again, the Plans Examiner noticed this violation in August of 2023. The area where that five-foot buffer, I guess, is supposed to be is actually a retaining wall due to a grade change on the site. So it's, it wouldn't be providing a landscape buffer to anything since, since it's a, I'm sorry, since it's a retaining wall with packed earth behind it. Also, the Plans Examiner, for the first time in August of 2023, cited a driveway violation, that the driveway is not 10 feet wide. It is in fact nine feet wide. It has been nine feet wide since this was originally approved in October 2020, but it was cited by the Plans Examiner last August. And finally, again, although the parking area, the number of parking spaces and the maneuvering area have all been the same and were the same at the time of the October 2020 hearing and the March 14th, 2023 hearing, the Plans Examiner also cited that as a violation. So I can contend that this is a bit of housekeeping to clean up violations that were cited late in the game, and I can also represent to the board that the building is substantially complete. It's about two weeks away from certificate of occupancy. ISD has allowed for construction to progress during this latest appeal to the board. I'll pause there, Madam Chair, and I'll take any questions that any members may have.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying all of those. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. When was the last time this project was approved in front of this board? What date was that?
Was it the March 2023, Mr. Attorney Moranci?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. Yes, March 14th, 2023.
Okay, and I just kind of would like some clarification on A02, the site plan. And I just kind of would like some clarification on A02, the site plan. Are the five parking spaces at the rear within the property lines for, I think, for 8 and 10 Mercer Street?
Yes, they are within the property lines of this project, 8 to 10 Mercer Street.
Okay. Do you own 12 Mercer Street?
No, 12 Mercer Street, the first time that this went to the board, there was a companion application for 12 Mercer Street for the shared driveway. 12 Mercer Street also had its own use premises application, which was approved for parking for two cars behind 12 Mercer Street. Again, it was a companion case with this case in October 2020. So there will be an easement area along the property line between the two properties, allowing for parking at the rear of both parcels.
Okay, so 12 Mercer Street has two parking spaces on its property and it's using that main driveway, and this property, 8 to 10, has an easement to use that nine-foot driving aisle, correct?
Yes, it's actually a cross easement. It allows both properties to be able to use a common driveway to provide access to the rear. Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We have, there are some comments that Bob Miko submitted.
Okay, if you want to read them.
For 8 to 10 Mercer Street, to remove space number five for safer maneuverability. I don't know if Bob is still present.
Yes, I'm here.
Is that the only comment, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I was asking the question, because Bob, as I was looking at your comment, there's a drawing that is noted on the plot plan, and I didn't know that's what you were referring to, which was kind of a parking space behind 12 Mercer Street.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, another issue is the width of the driveway. It's pretty tight, and if there's any snow or ice on the ground, it's going to be pretty difficult to gain access to the rear parking spaces. But in order to have a clear maneuverability, I think by removing space number five, no, I'm sorry, space number one, I can't see that down. I'm sorry, space number five, I apologize. It's kind of small, yes. Space number five and making the other spaces wider, it would give adequate maneuverability. But I'm still worried about the width of the driveway. It's kind of narrow, but I can't go along with that. But again, I'll leave that up to the discretion of the board, but I can't, I can't in good conscience go along with that. Thank you.
Mr. Maransy, is the person different than when we approved it the previous time?
No, it's the same, Madam Chair. It's been approved. It was, it's been approved by the BBDA after design review, actually now twice, and the project is built, quite frankly.
Okay. Questions from the board? Other questions?
Do you have a variance for amount of parking currently?
Yes, there was a variance for insufficient off-street parking that was previously granted.
Okay, great, thank you.
May we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS conducted a Butters meeting on December 4th, where the proponent presented the plans and described the current circumstances that they were seeking to go through for the ZBA. There was a mix of opinions expressed. Several residents expressed support for the project, citing the long construction process and they're eager to see it finished. Another resident mentioned some concerns regarding where the mechanicals be located on the property, and another expressed concerns regarding their driveway being blocked by various vans and delivery trucks. The proponent was on that call and expressed a desire to work with them to figure out how to come up with a solution so that problem doesn't occur again. Later, our office did receive a call expressing opposition, citing the number of variances being sought. The Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association was in support of this proposal. With all that information, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that parking be reduced to four for maneuverability.
Is there a second?
Madam?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt a motion, Madam Chair, but my client is actually, these are condominium units that are actually being pre-marketed based on five parking spaces that have already been approved twice by this board.
And Madam Chair, sorry, this is Javier.
That would be also a court rule?
Yeah, following up from Attorney Maransy, yes, I believe that would also cause a further violation in which you would have to seek new relief for four parking spots instead of five.
Okay, so I'm going to change my motion and do a new motion with a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Take one.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Berbrazo.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and I appreciate the thoughtful reconsideration of the initial motion. Much appreciated. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1530363 with the address of 28 Evergreen Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
Okay, there's a raised hand. Don, are you looking at, is this your project?
Yes. Yes, I, is the, are we rolling?
Go.
Great. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Don Wees. I'm with the law firm of Dane Torpey, located in downtown Boston at 175 Federal Street. I'm here representing the homeowner, Jesse Wilson, and also with us is the project architect, Bruce Miller. This is a proposed conversion of a three-family that's been on the site since roughly 1891 to a four-family. This is a multi-generational house. Jesse broke in this house with his family. His parents still live in the building. He lives here as well with his wife, Rose, son Ellis and daughter Violet. His son is 10, his daughter is seven. They have all been living in a two-bedroom apartment up to this point. It's the city. People may do, but they've been looking to expand. There is a third unit on the top floor of the building that they could theoretically expand into, but they have a longtime tenant, a single woman who's there they don't want to displace. So they began to look at options for more living space on the property. Originally, they wanted to convert the barn behind the building. They looked into that fairly closely, but really the breakthrough of the design was adding an extension to the back of the building and demolished the barn with the effect of essentially pooling their backyard, their neighbors' backyards, the large double-side yard, creating a lot of open space. Jesse has met extensively with his neighbors and has a great deal of support. We have support letters in the file from multiple Butters, including three direct Butters. There are fewer Butters as well who have been informed of the project and just weren't interested in pursuing. They're involved in the process, but Jesse's done an exemplary job of outreach. One support letter in particular by a neighbor who lives diagonally across three, can't be here today, is Dr. Ted Landsmark. He's one of the more prominent members of the land use community in Boston across several decades. I won't read his letter, but I will quote two sentences from it. Dr. Landsmark wrote, speaking of Jesse's proposal, "The concepts and planning are exemplary of new directions the city must take to meet our housing needs while continuing the presence of this great neighbor and his family on the street where he grew up. This project has my unequivocal support." We're going to have our architect, Bruce Miller, briefly walk you through the plans. As I think you'll see, as Bruce shows you the design, it's a sensitive, contextual, very appropriate design, given the character of the building and the surrounding buildings. Bruce, do you want to explain your design to the board?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Don. Yeah, we looked at different ways to, you know, add square footage to this existing property, and we, looking at the footprint of the existing barn, if you could go to the plot plan, existing plot plan, one before that. There it is. Oh, that's it. The barn, the existing barn is up against the rear property line, which is kind of an issue for the rear neighbor and also creates kind of an awkward space between the existing house and the barn. So we quickly realized that rotating that barn and, or that form and pushing it up against the existing house was probably the best way to create open space for the neighbors. So if you go to the next plot plan, please. So here you can see the shadow of the existing barn. We basically took that exact footprint and then rotated it to be orthogonal with the house, and then we added a small bump out on the left, which kind of mimics an existing bump out of the main house up at the street. Next slide, please. So here, you can see that, you know, the main volume of the proposed addition is that exact dimension of the barn, and then we took cues from the house itself, you know, Jesse's house, but also neighbors' houses, other houses on the street, trying to kind of break down the massing of the proposed addition, mainly, you know, mimicking the roof line, extending the roof line, but also shifting it so that it reads as a separate volume, using shed dormers. The two-story bump out is, again, similar to the bump out at the front of the house and very similar to a lot of other houses on the street where you see there's kind of a series of additions that have been added over the years. Next slide, please. So this is a good telling photograph of kind of the awkward nature of the way the barn is sighted now. It's very close to the back of the existing house and not on the same geometry as the house. It's rotated, and as I said before, it's right up against the rear property line, which the back neighbor is not thrilled about. Next slide. Okay, so here, similar view, where you can see by pulling that, the proposed addition closer to, or up against the back of the existing house, we've kind of cleaned up that back area to maximize the space around the house and done our best to keep the massing of that addition down with the, you know, roof lines perpendicular, the ridge line perpendicular to the street and the shed dormers. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
So does it improve the setback with the neighbor that you referenced with the existing barn?
Yeah, it does. I mean, if you can, if you go back up two images, yeah. So you can see there's sort of a hedge drawn against that back. That's the property line. So rather than having that barn right up against that property line, you know, there's a little more space there. And then also, there's a lot of green space to the right of our property at the top of the page, which, you know, gives some relief to the neighborhood.
And Madam Chair, if I might just add, we have support letters from both of our directory of Butters in the file.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting, which I understand was a very productive one. The applicant then went on to meet with the JPNC on November 1st. The JPNC, taking into consideration the family's needs as well as the strong support from a Butters, voted to support this proposal. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Lee, looking to get testimony here?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Yeah, my name's Paul Saloo. I am the homeowner at 34 Evergreen Street. I directly abut this property at 28 Evergreen Street. I am in complete and total support of this project. As the lawyer mentioned, Jesse and his family have grown up in the house. They've got three generations there, and if anyone deserves to have something like this approved, it is their family. Again, I am the direct abutter on Evergreen Street to the right-hand side, so this project obviously affects me quite a bit, but I, that said, I'm in complete support of the project, and I strongly encourage the board to approve, to let Jesse and his family have a little bit more space for their kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Berbrazo.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have two companion cases, first being case BOA 1486693 with the address of 16 Mather Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 148672 with the address of 16 R. Mather Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Chavez. I'm the representative for the owners, and they are also here, Kofi Taha and Shanti Kleiman. My address is 26 Anheal Park in Dorchester. Some context for the project, this, the overall proposal here is the conversion of a carriage house that's in the rear of an existing two-family into an additional dwelling unit. The, you know, some background here is that the owners were part of the Mayor's Office of Housing's first pilot exploration of detached ADUs and carriage house conversions back in 2021, but they were one of eight homeowners who went through a process to explore this concept. They will be, there's one currently under construction now in JP, and if they get this through, this will be the second one that will be from that original cohort. Of course, there's been a few others that have gone through this process and through this board before. Owners are submitting for permitting last year. All the zoning variances that were listed on the refusal are existing conditions of the lot and the existing house that are on there now. There's no proposed work that's actually triggering any zoning violations with the conversion of the lot, other than the second dwelling on a single lot due to the concept of the additional dwelling that it has, it currently works in the City of Boston. There are some small dormers being added to the carriage house itself, but again, those are not triggering any zoning violations. The ADU will have all its utilities tied into the existing house to ensure that they can't be subdivided in some future time, so the electrical, water and sewer will all connect to the basement of the existing two-family and, you know, continue to behave as an accessory dwelling unit. It will also have a fire alarm, fire protection system in compliance with the fire code. The fire department just released a new detached ADU code compliance guidance book in December, and this ADU meets all of those criteria as it's been designed. So that will be going through, obviously, BFD after this process as part of the permitting approval process again. And that's the kind of quick overall summary there. The actual structure itself will remain the same again and will, you know, the aesthetic of it will be kept as a carriage house visually from the exterior as well, and I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Due to personnel changes, we don't have much information on this specific proposal. With that, also, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good. Ten points.
Ten points.
Good.
And Madam Chair?
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayame Dele Muywell. The office of City Councilor, Brian Worrell. In regards to this project, the applicant met with Melville Park, which they presented the project. So no, we have received no letters of opposition with this project. And given the nature of it, we want to be on record in support.
Okay. Kim, and then Kofi?
Yes, my name is Kim Donners. We have a business around the street over 50 years, around the corner. I believe this project will be a great opportunity to add much-needed homeownership without negativity impacting the neighborhood. Change is hard, but it is needed for more housing, and we are in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much. I'm here with Shanti Kliman. I'm Kofi Taha. We are the homeowners. And we just want to add that we did the Butters meeting on...
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it, but we know you support it. We're doing public testimony right now. Annie, are there other raised hands?
Hi, my name is Annie Grealish. I live at 4 Lake Street, Brighton, Mass. I'm a longtime Brighton resident and business owner, a member of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. I'm speaking today to show my full support for this project that is being proposed.
Are you speaking to 42 Waverley or 16 Mather?
42 Waverley.
Okay, so we're not on that yet. That's the next case. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No additional raised hands. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Rewell?
Yes.
Ms. Berberazo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1552468 with the address of 42 Waverley Street. If the applicant and/or their representative submit to the plain case in court?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of the applicant on Waverley Street. Witness this afternoon is Ian Gleason, who's the owner of the property. 40-42 Waverley Street. The zoning in this neighborhood is 3F, 4,000. The lot size is 13,626 square feet. This proposal is to construct a new 14-unit residential building with 14 underground parking spaces on a combined lots of 40 and 42 Waverley Street in Brighton. The current buildings will be raised under a separate permit. The proposed residential building will have, will be three stories, and the unit mix is as follows. There will be 10 two-bed, two-bathroom units. Those average about 990 square feet. One, excuse me, four one-bed, one-bath units, and those average 724 square feet. This project will also include the construction of backyard patios, private decks for the 14 units and communal decks. There are a number of multi-unit apartment buildings along Waverley Street in addition to two and three-family dwellings. So the project this size should fit with the current residential context of the street, especially because it is such a large lot. I just want to spend a few minutes going over the violations. We were cited for the following violations. However, several of them were issued in error. We have an open space violation. The requirement is 650 square feet. We're at 473 square feet. Additional lot area is 4,000, the first two, 2,000. That's an active violation. FAR 0.8 is allowed. We're at 1.29. A front yard setback. The modal is 12 feet. We're at 15 feet. This is not a violation. As once, as everyone on this board knows, once you have two houses in the same block, the minimum setback becomes the modal. That would remove both the front yard violation as well as the existing building alignment. And also with the rear yard, the requirement in the zoning subdistic is 30 feet. We're at 55 feet. This, again, was another violation issued in error. You measure the rear lot line on a regular-shaped lot from the line most distant and opposite from the front lot line. The rear lot line must be at least 10 feet in width. So our rear lot is 55 feet in a 30-foot required zone. Off-street parking. There are 28 spaces required. It's two spaces per unit. And we're providing 14 spaces, all of which will be EV prep-ready. And these units will be additionally, they'll be home ownership condominium. And two of the units will be designated affordable. Right now, one is a two-bed, which we feel we could reconfigure into a three-bed because it's a larger unit as an affordable, and the other will be a one-bed. Additionally, there will be an elevator in this building, so all of the units will be accessible, which is not commonly found in such a smaller building. I just want to spend a minute on the BPDA recommendation because that recommendation was issued based upon the erroneous refusal letter. The planner based the main reason for the recommendation on a rear yard is the plan review has cited the smaller section of 4 feet 1 inches. We are 55 feet from the rear lot line in the 30-foot zone. Same with front yard and existing building alignment. Also, they stated one affordable in that recommendation when we had been dealing with the BPDA staff for several months on two affordable units. And finally, I just want to say that these units will be priced lower than the current buildings in the area. On a square foot basis, it would be hundreds of dollars less than the higher luxury buildings. Happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I just confirm that you said that you are providing two IDP units in case the project is approved?
That is correct.
Is there a house agreement at this moment or not for those units?
This was, this was months in the making. We've been dealing with this for several months with the BPDA on that.
And Mr. Valencia asked if there was a, is there an agreement in place or in the works?
No, we just, because obviously you don't have a project until you, you know, pass the ZDA hurdle. So we just reached out early with the BPDA and let them know what our intention was. And that is what our intention is. And as I stated, we have currently a two and a one. But this backyard has like player, if it kids and things like that. So the two-bedroom could actually be changed into a three-bed, and that would be an affordable unit.
Mr. Hampton, can you weigh in? Because Attorney Pugini is focusing on the setback as the recommendation, why the recommendation for denial. But the recommendation references reduction of number of units and massing to match built environment. So it's not focused on that.
Yeah, I think I can agree with Attorney Pugini on some of the inaccuracies of the rejection letter that I think a lot of our decision was based on. I know that in this particular street that there are multifamilies. At this point in time, I think the number of units was a little excessive. But with that being said, that was based on one IDP unit being referenced by our neighborhood planner and not two. So that may have changed the vote. I can't speak to that because the vote is what it is, and that's what Amy Chambers sent to you. But, you know, two IDP units is a lot different than one, and that may have affected the decision.
Okay. And as far as the other multifamilies in the area, I mean, I'm trying to go up and down the street, and they appear to be no more than six units. Am I, in general, in general? Is that a fair assessment? Or Ms. Berberazo, I know you usually focus a little bit more on that.
Yes, I'm trying to get a handle on 38 Waverley Street to see how many units are on that one.
I mean, I see one that looks like a larger multi-residence, but the rest seem to be three and six families. In the meantime, are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question following up on the affordability. What levels of affordability have been contemplated so far?
So where these are condominiums, we're thinking 80% and 70% AMI. So lower on the second AMI.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, excuse me, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston-Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Here to testify that we did have a Butters meeting for this project last on December the 5th, 2023. In that meeting, some attendees expressed concerns. And of the attending in the Butters who had concerns, they included insufficient parking size, density, privacy, and affordability. Some attendees were in support of the project. The Alston Civic Association sent a letter this morning to the Board of Opposition. The Brighton Alston Improvement Association is on to testify. I believe it's either the President, Dan Daly, or John Bly. As to their stance, our office did also receive seven letters of opposition from residents of Waverley Street. One letter which was sent without an address, also in opposition. One letter of opposition from the larger community. And one letter of support from a Butters. 13 letters of support from the larger community. And one letter of support from a non-resident of Brighton, a former resident of Brighton. With that said, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, are there raised hands?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Daniel Daly. I'm the president of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. The BAI has voted to support this project. We understand that some of the neighbors have fears of losing their residential character to too much density. But we supported this project because the project is within the allowed height, not changing the character of the neighborhood. And its proposal is not far off from the use, but yet providing 14 home ownership units with two affordable units, along with an elevator for accessibility and parking for everyone. The design is also in the character of a house versus a large apartment building. And we think that was complimentary to the existing housing stock on Waverley Street. And this project will provide much-needed home ownership and two affordable. And it's important to build projects of this luxury buildings, which prices that may be more affordable. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, I have you ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Colazo, and I'm a homeowner adjacent to this proposed project. It is erroneous to say that we have multifamily size and scale of this type of project in the neighborhood. I was an original owner of one of the bills that this developer builder did do. I think it was adequate to say that three and six families are what we have in the neighborhood. We would not have something with 14, 15 units. This unit is squarely in the middle of a block that does not have any cut-through. So if there was a fire or an emergency, I would be afraid for 14 people to be able to get out of that building in a calm manner when you can't even use an elevator, especially if you're trying to provide accessibility. So I just want to go on the record to say I'm completely and vehemently opposed to this plan as it is currently being presented for the various zoning breaches that it presents. As concerned citizen of this project, it contradicts and conflicts with many of the zoning guidelines that exist. Many may say the zoning requirements are outdated, but we disagree. This particular neighborhood, which I live in, was established to provide homeowners with green space and room from the congestion from the center of Boston. As newer, as a newer homeowner who has purchased from this builder and lived in this part of Boston for nearly six years, I appreciate respect, our neighbors, and our desire to keep the appeal of this neighborhood by not overpopulating or developing the immediate area adjacent to our homes. It is enough we are being confronted with various projects in the periphery where high-rises are being established without any regard to the infrastructure or the impact this density already will have on our neighborhood. And mind you, those big buildings are going to accommodate affordable housing in a bigger way. Given the notoriety and other established businesses as well as the activities that already happen along the Charles River, we're becoming a destination to visit. This means the space around us, the parking and green space, already becoming challenged. One may argue bikes and buses serve a purpose. We see Ubers racing down our street and parking spaces meant for residents being taken. This bill being proposed only exacerbates the problem without having the proper accommodation for the congestion being created. If we grant relief today to the request for variance exceptions, we start a precedent of encroaching on immediate homes where we are trying to promote families and homeownership with space to play and the neighborhood is free from density. Zoning rules exist for a reason. Today's proposal is asking for too many exceptions, which, if granted, would negate the reason why this committee set the criteria and the policy. So we can ensure that the right development and building are happening in the right areas, further so that projects are proposed and developed that are fit for purpose in the respective areas of Boston. We are supporters of reasonable home ownership for all socio-economic levels. But also, we strongly believe that this must come with responsible development and building and not a detriment to those in the area where residents have been for many years. If we allow this project to proceed as is, this engages all the efforts to date to contain and maintain properly scoped neighborhoods that can support the bill being proposed. A 14-unit building in the middle of a residential neighborhood conflicts with this purpose and what this committee is supposed to be the guardians of. Guardians and stewards to promote proper and responsible development and building as of right, rising is how this project should proceed and in accordance with zoning policy currently in place. This builder is fully aware what meets this criteria. We have been supportive of his projects in the past.
Please wrap up, Ms. Colazo. Thank you.
I am wrapping up. Thank you. And we ask that this committee hold this project to that standard and not over-densify a specific neighborhood and area that cannot support what is being proposed today respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll ask others to please add to that and not repeat information. Thank you. Rebecca and Lynn Thomas, will you both unmuted?
Hi, this is Rebecca Michaels. I live across the street at 43 Waverley Street. I also own 41 Waverley Street. I think that Ian has done a good job on the projects to date. However, this one goes beyond what is reasonable. He requires, he's required to have 2,800 square feet, 28,000 square feet. He has 14,000 square feet. That's half of what he needs to build this building. This building would represent a 600% increase in the density. It costs us green space. It increases the non-permeable ground cover. It takes down canopy trees. I'm very much in favor of affordable housing, but I think that the cost of this project to the community and the city at large is out of proportion to the expected gain of two units of affordable housing. Mayor Wu has emphasized the need for us to plan better and more thoughtfully, and I really don't think this project does it. One of the other issues that the other buildings in the area, the, along the periphery...
Hello?
Hello?
Please wrap up. Thank you.
Okay. The buildings along the periphery are still not at full occupancy. So I think really we need a pause before we start to do something like this within the direct, in the neighborhood itself. Also, there are no six-unit buildings on this block except for at the corner of Mackin and Waverley. Everything else in this, in this building, in this block is no bigger than three units. Thank you.
Thomas?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thomas Leonard. I live at 50 Aldi Street, Apartment 2, Alston, Massachusetts, Ward 22. And I just want to speak in opposition to this particular project. As others have stated, the developer, Ian, has done great projects in the neighborhood, but this one is too dense. The area that I would like to focus on, additional lot area insufficient. As proposed, this project would require 28,000 square feet. And the proponent has less than half of that at under 14,000. Compromise with the neighborhood could be two threes or two fours. And just because you're doing two threes or two fours doesn't mean you need to take out that affordable unit. So I just want to go on the record in opposition. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, mine up for as representative the carpenters in it would like to go on record in support.
Thank you, Paula Alexander. Are you speaking on the project?
Very much. I'm Paula Alexander, 226 North Harvard Street in Alston. I'm a lifelong resident and homeowner of Alston and Brighton, and I vehemently oppose this particular project. It's, it's just doesn't fit in, in the lot. No matter how they try and, and present their numbers, and it's not that big, and if you went in person and looked at it, you would see that it's just cramming this, this particular design in between two smaller lots, and it's, it's really doesn't belong in that particular area. I know, I'm very familiar with the, with the residents, long-term homeowners. They keep their houses beautiful, and to have this dumped on them is really unfair. There are thousands of new apartments abutting Western Ave and Leo Birmingham Parkway, and to insist on approving a project like this of this size is really, is really a slap in the face to the president butters and homeowners, and I, I hope you can reconsider and really, really ask the proponent to go back to the drawing board and, and, and listen to the butters.
Jessica, are there, are there any other raised hands? And how many? Nobody.
Madam Chair, there, there is seven raised hands, yes, it's--
Seven? Okay, well, we're not going to take seven. We can take two more and see where we go. Jessica? Okay, I'll go to Melinda-- And please keep it brief. And then Brian. You've both been unmuted, Melinda, and then Brian. I would ask the others to submit your, your position on the, on the chat, whether it's for or against, but keep that brief, too. Hey, Brian, go ahead.
Hello, Madam Household members. I just wanted to also oppose for this project because it's definitely too massive. I approve three families that recently built, I lived here for over 20 years, I lived on 32 Waverley Street, and the three families that I approve is 38, 44, 50, and 54, there were three families. A 14-unit is too big for the street, and that's, I just want to add that in, but I believe the project, you know, the developer is great, but I would like to see maybe like three, three units for each lot, because that's what we have down the street. So I just want to give my info. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Okay. Tai Chen?
Can you hear?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I live at 32 Waverley Street, is, the area is really congested, and even sometimes I go outdoor on the street, go out leaving my driveway and take, I will see, we see five, six cars run by. If you build a 14-unit in, on our street, then I believe on my street, on my 32-way street, and can have a traffic license on, because you might wait for 10 cars and go by and cannot get out the street. It's really, I'm really against that, uh, building 14 units on our street, Waverley Street.
Thank you. We also have testimony here.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Javier. I think at this point, we can ask any members who wish to put their opposition support in the chat, and we can make a record of it.
Already done, but I'll ask again, if anyone else wants to weigh in to please provide their comments in the chat. In the meantime, are there any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, could I have an opportunity just to respond to all those comments? That'd be very quick.
Yes, I just want to see if anyone has any questions from the board that you can include in your response. Okay, hearing none, then please.
I just want to go over this whole project. You know, we have minimal dimensional violations. We have no height in either stories or feet. We have no rear yard violation, no side yard violation, no front yard violation, and I understand the neighbors are concerned about parking. This developer went through the effort, and I think everybody can appreciate how expensive it is to put parking below grade in a 14-unit building. And what that was able to do was to provide one-for-one parking, which I think everybody on the board, if this was an Article 80 project, they'd be pushing back at point five. So we're one-to-one parking requirements that are off-street parking contained inside the building, and that was able to lower the building. It's not dwarfing anybody, this building is not overshadowing any of the other buildings. It is a larger building on two lots, not one lot, and, you know, again, homeownership, which is what Brighton needs, and most importantly, it is affordable market rate units, because it's not a luxury high-rise building, it does have all the amenities, it has a gym, bike rooms, it has elevator and things like that, so it's accessible, but overall, it's hundreds of dollars square foot less than a regular building or, you know, one of the buildings you see all over Brighton and Alston. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna put forward a motion of denial without prejudice. I think that the project scale at 14 is too large for the context as within. I think the applicant should come back with a much more sizable proposal, you know, ranging at least, you know, at the max, maybe 12, 10 to 12 seems reasonable with these two combined lots. That would allow for much more open space. Currently, the project is really maximizing its lot coverage and therefore am putting forward that motion of denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. All right, see you all next time.
Have a good one.
Recording stopped.